To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
February twenty-sixth, meeting to order at seven P M. Clerk Colerole.
Alderman Joss.
Here.
Alderman Amundson.
Here.
Alderman Greiner. Alderman Newhouse.
Here.
Alderman Bab.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Also present Clerk Steel, Treasurer Warren, Street Superintendent Smith, Police Chief Merritt, Office Manager H R Benson, Building Inspector Dearborn, Attorney Herman. Ports of city officials, I spoke with Kim Bacon, who is the pastor of the New Covenant Church of God, and her and the board has no issues with us accessing the burn pile back there. And we will be getting that in writing, so. Clerk?
Did you mention anything about Crispy being on their property?
No, I did not.
I'm just curious.
Clerk?
I'll just be requesting an exec for specific personnel when time comes.
Okay. Treasurer?
No report.
Mister Attorney?
No report.
Mister Inspector?
No report.
Any communications?
None.
Any citizens wishing to address the council? Ports of standing committees? I think I got police.
The seventy-two got back the alignment, the bushes were completely shot on that left side. So that girl that's on the agenda, nine fifty-four seventy-eight. He said they got it back in as close as they could get it to right on. He says as long as we rotate our tires normally like we should, probably we'll never see an issue. But he believes that it could have been something from the accident, that that's the reason that they can't get it completely dead on. It was like a point five out. So he said, but normal wear and terrible rotating tires as you should, it shouldn't be an issue. So it's back on the road and new tires, so we'll go back to it there.
Where did you take that?
It was taken to peak in alignment.
Thank you.
Last minute, this afternoon, I got, those are good, a good last minute. There's a young officer that just was hired by East Peoria. Was down there training for like two months, and it seems to be a little more fast paced than what he can deal with right now. He's been through the academy, he came here and talked with me this afternoon, we spent about an hour or so together. For that application. So something I might be looking into, as possibly another full-time officer. I've talked with his training officer that he had in East Peoria. He has also signed off to allow me to go look at his training file. But he says he just is very young, he's twenty-two years old. And probably a slower paced department would be a good start for him to work his way into it rather than jumping in the fire. That was also, got a second call from an individual who lives here in town. Has been with the Department of Corrections for five years. And he drives like an over an hour to get to work every day, he's working a lot of overtime hours there. And he came in and showed some interest in the position. He has no P T I training, police training, just D O C. So start looking at these two, one would have to go to training, one would not. Just to get, try to keep our ducks in a row with losing people as we have. And other agencies are still short that pay better than we do. So just trying to say out of the game, it was kind of nice that was, I mean like back to back today, that they showed up, so.
Good.
So just make you aware.
Okay. Anything else? Clerk?
No report.
Okay. Streets?
The street department is going to be looking at getting the sweeper up and running. They're also planning on getting Mister Bab taken care of, whether permitting. Tim is in contact and still waiting on permissions concerning the bridge and the outfall project, so more to come on that. The new dump truck is waiting on parts, so more to come on that. We need to figure out what to do concerning the lease on the backhoe right on our corner. There needs to be some kind of discussion about the three sixteen and if we're going to pour money into it, and if so, how much?
Is that the?
Yeah.
Quotes?
Twenty-four years old.
What's the, what's the intention with three sixteen, to go to water or? Okay. Anybody got any questions on this?
How far are we going to throw good money at bad? We put thirteen thousand dollars into a transmission in this thing, and now it looks like we're going to spend another seven or twenty on a twenty-three year old truck. That may be worth twenty grand running.
Lucky.
Is the new truck the same size as this truck?
No.
It's not?
The new truck got us below driver restrictions.
It's got what?
Got us below driver restrictions, we don't need a C D L class B to drive the new truck, was the intention, anybody could drive it with a class B.
It virtually is the second truck is.
Yeah, the Chevy thirty-five hundred. So this is, this is the only plow truck we have?
No.
Big plow, I mean.
We've got the big international.
Okay.
The big one.
Okay.
We've got the new Chevy.
Okay.
We've got the water truck. And we have the plow attachment for the backhoe.
And also the water plant has a.
Oh, the Kodiak.
Thirty-five hundred. They got a thirty-five hundred to hook the plow on to.
Okay, so what would this, what would the international be used at the water plant for then?
The backup on water main brakes, just like the Kodiak been used when Streets was busy with the other trucks. Probably the last five years hasn't really played out that way, would you say, Tim? Where we've needed three trucks at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't need them all, we usually try to use the water truck instead of using ours, but sometimes that don't work, so.
What's your thoughts, Tim?
I'm not sure. We did the seven thousand now, not saying that down the line, another one though.
Well, I, I kind of agree with Justin that, I mean, you, you gotta, you gotta stop it at some point, throwing money at some point, especially a twenty-three, twenty-four year old vehicle, you know?
Bob's gonna, Bob's gonna help me and get check the kingpence on the Kodiaks.
We may be able to not move the Kodiak and keep it with just a few, a small investment in it and make it where the guys can drive it, because they just can't steer it, it's the only thing I know of that, it's got an issue.
You better go get a massage for your arms.
Yeah, and nobody's looked at it for five, six years on that purpose. And we need to find out exactly what that situation is.
It always sits down at the water plant, we're getting there, so.
Could be gearbox, could be power steering pump, could be kingpins.
Right, I'm, I'm betting kingpins. My history with them, it's kingpins. But back to the truck that's over interstate right now. The cylinder walls that's in it right now have been scored. There was water in the oil, they pulled the oil pan off. If we spend seven thousand on it, that replaces the cylinder and the piston for that cylinder. Doesn't do anything for the rest of the cylinders. Where that antifreeze or water came from that got into the oil is kind of a big guessing game. If that motor got hot, then it could have ruined the seals that are in the other cylinders. And we may not get ahead of anything. So if it gets rebuilt for the seven thousand, there's no knowledge of where it's going. And we're going to pull a cylinder head off anyhow, in order to get, so you're, you're one-sixth of the way through it to start out with. If they do the whole thing and they'll change all the bearings, all that stuff. As the truck sits right now, it's probably less than ten thousand dollars. I don't know if we'll get anything really as scrapping it out the way it is, somebody wanting to buy it and take it on as, as it is. I can't really justify putting seven thousand in it and taking a big risk of having more problems with it. And it's definitely not worth the two thou, uh, twenty thousand to overall. I, I'm almost at the point where we try to find somebody to take it off our hands the way it sits.
What do you think, Lisa?
I agree with Bob, I don't really know anything about trucks, I'd be interested to hear what everybody else has to say.
Ron, you got any?
No, I agree, I quote the experts, quote, go to the history of it.
Dave?
I can't see putting the money into it.
I agree. I think we just need to get the truck back here and, and look at getting rid of it.
Can we talk to center state and see what they'd offer us to?
To, to keep it.
Move it through them.
Yeah, leave it out there a lot until somebody takes it, there's no such a doing it on.
Because we'll have to tow it home, because they're going to have to play.
More exposure there.
You're, you're going to spend five hundred dollars getting it on.
Right. Yeah. So everybody good with Tim reaching out to them and?
They dropped the pan and found water in the well?
Yep.
They took the head off to see if it was a cold head gasket.
They can look.
Head gasket, they can look, they're out with a pan?
They can look at the cylinder walls from underneath, the oil pan is relatively easy to get. There, there's nothing in its way other than the down.
Well, they typically temp them, don't they, so they'll shoot temp on each cylinder and then see when you have a cold cylinder, you know you're not getting compression or fire in it.
But they could also look up and see, and see the scoring marks in the cylinder and understand that there's problems in the cylinder wall. That, it's been that way for, it, it just didn't happen overnight, guys.
Yeah. Okay, what else, Lisa?
That's it.
Okay.
What are we going to do about that, that couple of lease?
What options do we have?
Yeah.
What's, what's the buyout at the end of the lease, what's the option cost on the next lease option?
Need to see the lease.
What is?
Next April is supposed to be, I paid me a forty-three thousand dollars.
How much?
Forty-three. What'd you think I said?
You said forty-three to buy it out?
Yeah.
So we're at buyout?
Next April.
Oh, this April?
Two months?
No, like in next year.
A year.
A year.
Oh, a year for now?
A year for, for a little time.
Not this April, next April.
Okay.
Okay.
So at that point, because when we were looking at that one, they were what, approximately a hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, currently they're selling at ninety.
So they're coming down.
Yes.
So we may be better off sticking into a new lease or purchasing a new one?
Yeah, or just purchasing this one outright.
At forty-three.
At forty-three, because it's the contract they wrote. So if you purchase that way, you're going to be up forty thousand dollars, because one other, like, we went searching for them, they were selling for like ninety, eighty-five.
Oh, used at the same valuation as, okay, not new, starting at new rate, okay, because I was expecting new rates to be up around a hundred and fifty.
Good.
We have a year.
Okay.
All right. Water and sewer.
Kohoi was in, if you guys followed the email communications, I was trying to keep everybody abreast of what was going on as, as they were doing stuff, finding stuff. Other than Rick, I didn't have your email that I could get anything to you, so you were out of the mix on that.
Okay, I'll get one.
So came in, they cleaned the, the well. We actually gained seven feet of depth in the well by the amount of sediment that came out. It's there for anybody's review of if they want to look what came out of the bottom of that well.
Yeah, I seen that.
So there was questioning on with how much of that was in there, whether we had a broke casing, bad screen at the bottom, had issues. So sent the email out, recommended to camera it, so we knew we didn't have a bigger issue. Everything passed, everything looked good from the camera, they didn't see anything, no issues. So the next process, part of the process is they'll come back, do the acid etch wash stuff. They said that can sit in there until the parts arrive for the replacement. They'll finish that cleaning and put the new parts in. At the same time, they, they build the pump to our needs, so it's not like something that comes off of the shelf. They actually build the pump to fit our needs. Is there anything else more? Am I missing anything? Oh, the generator, rare wood, we had an issue with the starter. It was not kicking on when power was being pulled from it. Tim did some diagnosis, thought possibly solenoid, so changed starter solenoid, wasn't it? Full starter, had it bench tested, didn't test well, replaced that. In doing that, with it trying to cycle when it wasn't starting, it smoked the battery, so we got about four hundred, five hundred dollars worth of parts, battery, starter, starter solenoid that got put into it. Everything's up and running, storm comes through tomorrow, we're good to go.
Good.
How old was that better?
I don't know, been waiting nothing, hanging off of it.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's all I have.
Like to nominate Michael Hurst for the planning commission to replace Alicia Hampton. Just nominate, I know you get that one, so just nominate him, that's all.
Who is it?
Michael Hurst.
And who to replace him?
To replace Alicia Hampton.
When is the next?
We haven't come up with one yet, meeting yet.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Parks and buildings?
Heather's, Heather's not here, she called me, wanted to be sure that everybody's seen the pictures that were sent out on the High Line playground equipment when, when the inspection was done. And that she was concerned with that, and that's why it got put on the agenda. She's hoping to be here, she said before we got to that point of voting, but, so she could explain more. But there were some safety concerns, and she was worried that repairing and all of that on that equipment, on that old of equipment, isn't again throwing good money at bad. Her recommendation was to remove it and then look at capex for the next five, ten years of replacing it with better, better equipment. Safer equipment.
That equipment has got to be I don't know if the city ever, that I've been in the next forty-eight years, ever put that there, so it's been there for.
I thought when we discussed the parks in those areas, like with the main street one as well, was when that got taken out, I thought they were all discussed at that time, but I don't know what it was.
It was.
On that one.
It was, it was, that one specifically was talked about.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened.
I know it was still within good inspections at that point.
I know, we, we talked about removing it.
It was discussed and it was, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was discussed.
No, no, it's not, the, the high pressure ones got removed, it's the High Lines down there.
Right.
Them had to come out when, when they did that, and they wouldn't let us put them, they wouldn't let us put that one back in after the.
Yeah, because we talked about this one up here resting out in different areas.
Yep. Channel they were in and whether they were being used, if it was worth putting in money to upgrade them or do something with, and I don't.
That was discussed.
One down Main Street was torn out very easily.
Well, and that one was recommendation of the realtor as well. He said the property would look more presentable for sale without something that needed to be removed by a purchaser, so I mean that's.
It's safety, I think it ought to be removed.
Now, it's on the agendas.
It's on the agendas, yeah, she just wanted me to make sure everybody was aware that it got put on in between.
Yep.
And that emails.
The consent agenda in its entirety.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Bab.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Amundson.
Aye.
Alderman Joss.
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to new business, I would entertain a motion to appoint Timothy Reynolds as Deputy Treasurer, or should I say reappoint? All the guys.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Clerk Colerole.
Alderman Bab.
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Amundson.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Joss.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Uh, next two, Dave?
Motion to approve an annual subscription of software for checklist and inventory management for the fire department from P S Trax from fifteen fifty-one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions?
That's budgeted, isn't it, Dave? That's in their budget, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a heads up, this will be an annual subscription that you guys currently don't have.
Oh.
So it's fifteen hundred dollars every year, he does have money in his budget for it, it's just this will be a recurring as of.
We don't actually buy the software?
No. This is an annual subscription, this will be fifteen hundred dollars to the service we provide.
Okay.
Just.
Any other questions? Clerk Colerole.
One question before that happens, do we have to buy a new computer to make it run?
No, it's obvious, it's an inventory software, he, he came to me, so it's an inventory software to help them regulate like when parts are going bad on the fire truck and all.
Right, right, but some of that software doesn't like old computers.
No, it's done on the cloud.
Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Alderman Amundson.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Joss.
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Bab.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion to approve the purchase of replacement emergency lights, marker lights, and three seventeen bells, origin three thirteen from McQueen Emergency. Let's give, not to exceed twelve hundred dollars.
Do I hear a second?
One second.
Questions?
It needs it, I heard it screaming as it go out through town earlier. Their belts are squealing.
Any other questions? Clerk Colerole.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Bab.
Aye.
Alderman Joss.
Aye.
Alderman Amundson.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Just in time.
Just in time.
Oh, is it me?
Yep.
Which one? I make a motion to remove the playground equipment between Lincoln and Fulton on the High Line.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any additional questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Who did the second?
Me, Roundup.
Alderman Newhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Bab.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Joss.
Aye.
Alderman Greiner.
Aye.
Alderman Amundson.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Did you get the seven twenty-four?
Yep.
Uh, any citizens wishing to address the council? Any other business pertaining to the city?
Mrs. Gulf Green Vegetation Day. Uh, the Gulf Green.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. We're doing the inbuild and the head form.
Okay.
We, we are agreeing with the Rec Association, we are agreeing with the Rec Association, we are to eat the spray vehicle and the fence line. We currently have nothing licensed to spray, we are working on that, but it's not going to be soon enough. Probably two, three weeks after the first thing that was painted, should be done, I believe. So they're starting to get some quotes, just to see how much it would be just to do the inbuilds and fence lines and that's it, right? This is in the dugouts and this is, they say they're going to do them like four times a year, but it does have a price somewhere in there.
Six fifty per application?
Yeah, for each of them.
Are, are we, are we getting more quotes?
Um, I know Natraskate got a, gave the Rec Association a better price than this. I reached out to my guy and he was higher than this, but he said it would take six timers to keep the diamonds and fence lines clean versus just four, just with the cycle life of Roundup. Chris, Chris got one, they, they emailed him one.
Is Natraskate the one that has like, it's a yellow, 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 then like the, it's a cool down there button?
Possibly.
That was the five thousand dollar one, that was like eight, but they were spraying a lot more, like double as time, so it might be cheaper per round, but they're doing it a lot more.
Because he told me it was like seventeen hundred bucks, and he thought that was expensive.
The one that Chris sent me was five. We do have a couple of words, we're getting more.
Okay.
But just, just so it's on here, we have to find something pretty soon because we do have, Junior's going to be testing for the, the one that is over all, that then they're all going to be testing for the spray your life.
Typically, when, when do we, when the spraying starts?
Mid-March. Mid-March. First round should be mid-March, March fifteenth, March eighteenth, somewhere around there.
We have, we don't.
Yeah, it may be sooner if Groundsboro's hit fifty degrees. Unfortunately, with the diamonds up there, you can't put a pre-emergent down like you can in turf, because it gets turned, so a pre-emergent will give you a barrier that would, and there's no real good soil sterilant that can be put on the ball diamond to give you longer pro, cycle time. I know last year, there was eleven hundred dollars for the product that got put down on the diamonds, and they still didn't look great. Just, I know that's how much product got put down.
Understand. Okay. Any other business pertaining to the?
I have one other thing real quick.
Sure.
Um, I got a handy estimate for gutters on the squad garage. It was eighteen sixty-five is the estimate, six inch seamless gutters with three by four spouts. I didn't get a chance to talk to him, he, he came the day I was, uh, day I was off. But I'll reach out to him and see if it's, how many spouts is he talking, two spouts, with the three by four, he should be able to do one spout on each of them, front and back. But I don't know if he's got four figures or what. But I'll reach out to him, just to make you where I got that estimate. I'm probably leaning towards garage, garage on the doors, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars difference in costs. It's door link manufacturer, because of the door. It's two inch thick, the, and it's going to be insulated, it helps with the rigidity of the door, the operation. Ten point two for R V value, uh, R value on it, it's not an insulated building, but maybe down the road it would be, and it's a twenty-six inch gauge steel door. The other one, Middle Line, I believe it was a twenty-four gauge door. But for twenty-five hundred dollars difference, I think, uh, the doors are not going to be up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down all day long, it's going to be more like your, your home doors, uh, at home. You're going to come in, take the car out, I'm home, put the car away. If it was more, all day long, the doors up and down, I would probably look more towards the commercial type door rather than basically a good standard door. That'd be my recommendation, but I'll, I'll get, I'll add a shirt.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes.
Where did you get the estimate from?
Uh, Middle Line, I was the one.
And that made for the gutters?
The gutters was B M N Construction.
I, I got a gutter guy that's pretty good and he's pretty decent.
Okay, yeah, send me his number, yeah, that's the only one I. Send me his number, yeah. Yeah, that's the only one I've gotten. Um, I know another guy that does too, so I'm gonna send you something yet.
Okay. Any other business pertaining to the city?
I just have a quick question for clarification. Um, I walked in late to the committee meeting this month because of classes. I just wanna confirm, Chief, you and Chris agreed that the food trucks need to be on the dog park parking lot, correct?
That's what my suggestion was, yes.
For safety purposes.
Keep it out of the way.
Okay, that's just, I just needed confirmation on that. There was, um. The Rec Association had questions about it, but if it's down to safety, then there's no question to, in my.
Yeah, and the biggest concern there's gonna be them like turn it late into the day.
And, and yeah, he said that they were going earlier and then I talked to Nathan and they said that the food trucks have to be onsite by like two to get the food. Service, the food. Thank you, the health department certifications and things like that, so, um, that, there was. A question of what time they actually needed to be there versus not, but that's the only location that they can be at. That would not interfere with the.
Counsel, but they said that to me, that's a decision, that's really to be out of.
Well, then I guess that becomes a council decision. Are we okay with the food trucks? So Chris, I did speak to Chris, he did push back the time so that they should be and has informed. Already the organizations that they have to be out before, like by four forty-five, need to be out and gone of the parking. Um, the concern is, is that they do have games that are playing over on the fields closest to. Um, the Blacktop and the Dog Park, and if the vendors have to be in at two o'clock. That is, results in an additional loss of parking when they're already truncated on time. So. I don't know if that's something that the council would like Chris to come in for the committee meeting next week to discuss. Um, I say that with the knowledge that I will not be here until closer to seven fifteen, seven thirty, depending on classes. And he would come in to discuss that closer to six thirty, but. If that's at the council's discretion with the recommendation from both fire and police chiefs. If that's the only place for them to go and they need to be there by two o'clock, then the council needs to decide. Do we allow the vendors there and remove parking for the Rec Association? Or do we allow parking, but then we have to cut it off at a specific, you know what I'm saying? Like. At some point, it would just make sense to just block off a section and just say that section's unavailable for the day. I feel like that would give the least amount of. Miscommunication for that, but I don't know what that, what size of that is. It's my understanding that the men's club is only gonna have four, maybe five. Perhaps this year, which would mean that half of the parking lot could then be blocked off for the vendors and the other half could still be used. Until the afternoon.
Really depends on how they would, uh, line them up.
Well, and they need power, so they need to be closest.
Part of that argument was that it wasn't necessarily that they should be able to.
Control them.
Control on their own.
If they park facing, facing the pavilion down that edge. That should be, four of them should be able to fit from the dog park to LaSalle. Without much problem.
Right, that's dependent on the size of the trucks and the.
Even put them in an angle or something so they can sit in there, so I would think it would take the whole parking lot. It would take a fourth of it.
Okay, so then what it would then come down to, I guess, is.
Still blocking it off.
Blocking it off, right, right. So if it's the council's discretion that we would block off a quarter of the parking lot for the vendors. That would still leave three quarters of that dog park parking lot available for Chris and the Rec Association specifically for their various tournaments going on that day. Does that sound?
You're gonna run into issues because when people come in for those tournaments, they don't care about barricades. They. They park past them, they park over them, but. They did last year. They park along the tree line, we've got barricades up, they move them to, to dog park. Um, and then when you have the vendors come in, they're gonna come in with trucks and they're pulling their trailers and it's gonna take a little space to be able to. Position them where they need to position them.
In a parking lot that's already got cars in it.
Yeah.
So. It's a mess.
So if they're only using the parking lot, how many parking spaces is the dog park parking lot?
You might get thirty if you jam them in there probably.
So you're looking between like twenty to twenty-five if the, with the way people park nowadays, right? So as a council, we need to make a decision. And whether that's a discussion next meeting or if we continue that conversation tonight, I know it was just an additional conversation, but it was something that was brought up this week. So I didn't want to just sit on it, but if the council says, hey, we actually need more time to discuss how we're gonna go forward with this. I will just let him know that that's gonna be a conversation with the committee. He's welcome to attend.
It would depend on the weather, but we could extend parking into the grass towards. Joliet like we do for Spagalo if the weather was dry enough and not. Send cars into the mud.
But if we can't, you know, you can't depend on that, unfortunately. Like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit down and have a conversation with Chris and say, hey, the council's agreed to extend into the grass for that parking to accommodate. The loss of space. Right.
Well, unfortunately, the chief said, they show up for a tournament, they're gonna look for somewhere to park a car, whether we have it barricaded off or not, whether it's.
Well, then, I mean.
And the, the whole, the whole issue is that we shut the street down at five.
Right.
They got games planned until four forty-five, there's no way.
The game, they're gonna be cleared out of there. No, 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 he said they're supposed to be cleared out by four forty-five. The games are supposed to have started early enough that they are to be cleared out by four forty-five. Not games ending at four forty, that's what it was.
Last year, they were pulling down the street at five minutes till five.
I can only.
But they were also parked down the tree line down towards Hennepin, in that area too, so. It is, it's just a whole bunch of people to bring in here and they're not starting that much earlier than what they originally said.
I can only share what was.
Like an hour before what they originally said they were gonna start.
Yeah, so it sounds like, um, the council would invite the Rec Association to attend the committee meeting to answer any potential questions. And issues, and if it continues to be an issue this year, because there was a tournament last year and there were issues, if there continues to be an issue this year. Then the council may rescind, um, a tournament to be even available on the Saturday of. The fireworks celebration because it is such a large community event.
I, I think that would be probably the best anyway.
The person I had a conversation, he just happened to be in the office. He did come to talk to me. He was coming through the office making copies. And he mentioned that when he wasn't aware of any issues last year, I said, we talked about it. The issue was they were pulling out at five minutes till five before we shut the street down and they wanted to go westbound on LaSalle, it's like you're going that direction eastbound.
Right.
Rather than west, um, but he wasn't aware of any issues, but he was because I spoke with him about it.
Okay. Yeah, alright, so I think the next move then is just to invite the Rec Association to the committee meeting to discuss. That there were issues last year. It seems like there will continue to be issues this year, and if it does become an issue, then we will, then the council will be rescinding any.
The issue's not gonna be the kids being on the diamonds or the fireworks are let off. They'll be done before that. It's a matter of people. We're shutting the street down for people coming up there just to enjoy the evening and there's gonna be cars, I guarantee it, guarantee it. There'll be cars parked in there.
Yep.
Um, and they're gonna want out.
Okay.
I can't control everybody.
And that's what he said, we're putting it on our, putting information on our flyers, we're telling them they gotta be out of there, but you can do it all day long. But you're still, if you're gonna do anything about it.
So even if we barricade off the dog park, it's not gonna stop people from parking there all throughout the day?
Barricades, they'll park there all day long. We go get a, we write a ticket and we can tell it and it's gonna create an argument that we don't. Really don't need to have, but.
Right.
Let's go around it.
Yeah.
Okay. Clear's fine, thank you.
Any other business pertaining to the city?
Um, I just have one thing real quick.
Sure.
Um, we had, um, it has been brought to our attention that we had a citizen remove a tree. In, on city property, um, without permissions from the city, so we need to have a discussion about that. The tree, I don't, Lisa has more information, I believe. I can read what I have. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Let me find it, sorry. I don't know how far down it is. Well, Lisa, it might be easier for you to find, cause I don't have your phone number on my phone.
Okay. So, um, I talked with Glenn Ogle, the son-in-law of the new homeowners on LaSalle yesterday.
It was six oh two, I believe, is that the right address?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said that his mother-in-law is legally blind and is moving into the house hopefully this week. She's getting a C N I dog in a few weeks and before that happens, the ADA people. Uh, come out to inspect. The sidewalk is clearly dangerous. He mentioned that while they were working outside. A boy was riding his bike and hit the raised sidewalk that forced him into the tree and knocked him over. He said that the tree was dead and that the, the mayor who he is friends with said he could take it down. He was very defensive about it when I first showed up with questions, but simmered down and actually seems to have some valid points. Unfortunately, he didn't go through the proper process. He paid four hundred dollars to cut it down. And plans on having the stump ground out and replacing the sidewalk. He is also replacing the sidewalk in front of his house. At the corner of LaSalle and Joliet. He said that if he wasn't done before the ADA, if it wasn't done before the ADA shows up. For the inspection, they would make the city tear up way more than that, and he is aware that there isn't the funds for that.
So is this a?
Which house is this?
Is this a Silas house? Is this a service house for an ADA resident?
Yes, it will be, yeah. A personal home.
So it's not a Silas?
No.
It just sold. The house just sold.
Yes, just.
By, by a resident, not.
Just a resident.
So what, Josh, can you, what would entice an ADA inspection on any, I bought homes. And not once have I ever seen any closing documents where they required an ADA inspection.
It's because she's getting a C N I dog. They're very expensive and he said that that is. They come out to inspect before that.
So Maria and I did some investigating and. That is not factual from what, anything that we can find in writing. Is that correct, Maria? Uh, she did her research, I did mine. It ended up being on the same ADA website. Um, the only thing that they, the ADA requires. Um, when somebody is receiving a service dog is the, the kind of training that is received and the proper procedures to go through that training. Um, both for the animal and for the person that's going to use the animal as a, um, resource. Anything to add to that, Maria?
Yeah, it was, um. Right now municipalities and cities and towns have to be ADA compliant in their ramps. Um, their crosswalks, buildings, you know, colored buildings have to be ADA compliant. Um, sidewalks, if you do something, like if you decide to tear up them, then you have to put them in. So if our sidewalks were only thirty inches, they're not, but if they were only thirty inches wide, if we were to be replacing them, we would have to make them forty.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, ours are forty, but we would have to make them thirty-six and have, um.
Curbs, the curbs. Within two hundred feet, which the driveway considers. Can I request, uh, in addition to the executive session, you want to also go into executive session to discuss threatened litigation?
So was the tree dead?
No.
Tree was not dead?
Okay. And what's the process for taking down trees?
Uh, it, it's a process that you have to go through. I don't know exactly. I know that we had a house over here on Rogers. Just maybe nine months ago. Uh, it was in the fall that a gentleman cut the tree down. It was not completely dead. It had two live branches on it out of the whole tree, took it down and it was quite an ordeal. Um, it, it all has to stem with the fact that we're Tree City USA and the removal of any tree on city property. There's a checklist you have to go through. There's, I don't have the specifications. I didn't research that part of it. I was at work, um. Today and was not able to, but.
You supposed to get a permit to take the tree down?
Well, for a, a city tree, city person takes a tree down, we haven't talked about it, it's, uh. It's, it's our tree, so nobody's allowed to take it down but us. Um, if they're having work done and the tree is over fifty percent dead or something, there is a thing for trees. And they're having trees cut down on their own property, they can come up and say, you know, this tree's in bad shape, it's on your tree list. Um, we will pay to have it taken down. Are you okay? And we can give permission for that. Um, we don't give, cause a lot of people come up and want the trees in the right ways out and we're like, sorry, you know, we can't. Let you cut that down.
And honestly, I think it's even, I think it's even less than fifty, less than fifty percent or more than fifty percent is what I wanna say. That it's, it's, I mean, like literally, there was a tree in my, on my, um. What am I trying to say? Boulevard, thank you, on my boulevard and it literally had two limbs on it last year and it was not, it was not able to be cut down yet. I mean, the entire tree looked dead except for two limbs and it was, according to Tree City USA standards, we had to leave it. Trim it up.
So, wants to stop it ground up, is he gonna put a new tree in there or does he?
He didn't mention that.
He's going to put a new sidewalk in.
I know that.
But no, no tree. There was no mention of a tree.
What is the ordinance process on?
We were going to find the guy.
Citing somebody for?
Yeah.
Well, if he's taking a tree out of the penny, it could be considered criminal damage to property. If the tree's not dead. Could be a criminal damage to property and then depending on the size of the tree, you're looking at a cost.
Valuation of replacing the tree as standing or cost of drop service?
The side, the sidewalk is pretty unlevel. I mean, I, I drove by it twice. It was pretty rough, but, um. The tree was not on our list of trees that were diseased.
We also have a program addressing sidewalks that residents can approach us. We split the cost and sidewalks can be replaced, so that avenue wasn't even.
We were never approached with any of this, am I correct?
I think something like that on, uh, Trump neck. There was a sidewalk there that we tore out and replaced because there was a difference in the tree in the, in the, uh, right away. And caused it to heat.
The other question is, is I know we used to grind them, so they were accessible. They would take a pavement grinder to them and.
We have our own pavement.
I know.
Yeah, this one I think is beyond that, yeah, it's.
But it wasn't even approached to the city to even see if that was an avenue if we could have addressed the sidewalk.
Or temporary, or around it or whatever. The second part of that was, you said the mayor approved that?
That's what he said.
I spoke with him, uh, about the tree and I said, yeah, I had it just come down and the next thing I know. He had somebody cutting it down. So.
So he did contact the city, he just didn't do the right process.
Uh, the root system on that tree was, is atrocious. It's, it's almost into the, uh. Uh, water service line. That's right there. I don't know if it is in the water line. I mean, if you kinda look at it, you can see where it's dipped down, so I don't know if it has.
I've not gotten any communication through water that we have an issue in water, so homeowner hasn't come to the water department saying.
Or the sewer system or anything like that.
That there was any sewer issues.
What I'm saying is this, this, the resident thought it was okay to take it down because the mayor said it was okay. Is that what you're?
I said, yes, it needed to come down.
Okay, so he attributed that as okay, take it down. Okay. It's not like he just ignored the city. He got some kind of approval.
I guess you wanna call it that, yeah.
Whatever. He did talk to an official. It was like he just cut it down.
It was like he just cut it down.
I think the second part of that process would have to be an exec, for making any decisions moving forward.
I've got it on my list.
We got anything else?
If nothing else, make a motion to enter executive session to discuss specific personnel and possible litigation?
Anticipated or threatened litigation?
Anticipated or threatened litigation?
Second.
Seven fifty-one. Clerk, call a roll, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Alderman Jost?
Aye.
Alderman Ametson?
Aye.
Alderman Grainer?
Aye.
Alderman Newhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Bab?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Who do you?
Uh, I need Maria.
Okay, back in regular session at, uh, eight twenty-six, clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Jost?
Here.
Alderman Ametson?
Here.
Alderman Bab?
Here.
Alderman Newhouse?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Grainer?
Here.
Also, Clerk Steele, uh, Treasurer Warren, Attorney Herman, and Office Manager H R Vincent. Any other business pertaining to the city?
Just to inform the council, I will not be here on March eleventh, for the meeting on the eleventh, that's all.
I'm gonna shake the tree. So, I'm bringing it back up, cause we are roughly thirty days away from mowing season again. We currently use city resources and city labor that we are desperately short-staffed in to mow another taxing body's property, um, coming up LaSalle Boulevard. Beacon Park District, um, is responsible for the northern side of LaSalle Boulevard.
Yeah.
We have always maintained that, with no financial
compensation.
Compensation from the Beacon Park District. If you notice, the last two trees that we've had issues with at the bottom of the hill, our street departments contacted Beacon Park and said, you have an issue with a tree, they've paid to have somebody come take it, we've not used our resources on that. Being thirty days away from mowing season, I have a problem, we are expecting our taxpayers within our community to pay for this service that's provided to another taxing body that should be responsible for that property. I brought this up. Every other year, since I've been sitting here?
We've talked about it last year.
So, at what point are we going to, as a council, keep paying to, or keep, keep using our resources to pay for another taxing body's service?
And to clarify, the park district already cuts behind Pontiac, right?
They mow behind Pontiac, and then they bail the field behind that. So they're already up here. Ideally, how they're probably going to handle that property is they're probably gonna rough cut it, like the Parkway property, the backside of Coal Miners Park, it'll probably only get cut if Beacon Park is responsible for it, they're probably only gonna, they're probably only gonna service it four times a year.
But it's so much of our mowing.
Is that what they do in Pontiac?
Behind Pontiac, they mow it about four times a year, and then they come in and bail.
It's, right.
On behalf.
Elbow, okay, okay.
Then, they, they mow the strip, they mow the strip behind the homes, and then all of that into Dirksen Park, they have uh, a hay company come in and cut hay, and they bail it, and you'll see him come out with the red wagon two, three times a year.
Yeah, cause they drive it all the way through town.
Have you ever reached out and explicitly talked with them about this issue?
Well, when we took the tree down, they're like, oh yeah, we'll get all these cleaned up, cause that way you guys can mow. Yeah, that was the response.
Well, and who was the last person to have communications with them about mowing, though, was it Tony?
They've just never been called that.
I think it was Tony.
Yeah. I wonder if we, we don't have somebody reach out and say, hey?
I think that's where I, that's our. I agree.
I know last year with Nate, we, as a council, decided that, that the streets department would cut it less frequently. But I think we are at the point now where there's not even a body.
I'd reach out and say, look, we're low-staffed, and it's really unclear that we're gonna be able to continue providing that service, certainly at no expense as it's been. And we wanted to give you a heads up that you guys should plan on doing that, or if you'd like us to continue, we need to talk about a way that you help offset that cost.
Yep.
And just be frank about it.
I'll draft a letter. I'll draft a letter.
Yeah.
Communication skills over here, it's just like, hey, we can't afford it, you guys can have to mow it.
Well, that's, you were that blunt earlier, you can, yeah, that'll work.
I do, I do be that blunt.
You're gonna draft a letter up?
Yes, I would draft a letter that I have to rewrite a hundred and fifty times, make it professional, yeah.
Yes, you, yes.
AI will help with that.
You can just make it professional the first time, Maria.
And I can't.
Draft drafts are rough for a reason.
That's right, never to see the light of day.
Just, yeah, we're short on resources, and I think we have to be realistic about where, where revenues are going and how our expenses are getting spent.
Okay. Any other business pertaining to the city?
Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Say.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Eight thirty-one.